Good evening, welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 12th. Oops, I just hung up on Rick. I was trying to unmute him. Hey Rick, sorry about that. I was trying to unmute you and I hung up on you. Okay, so let's start that again. Good evening, welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, Tuesday, March 12th. Let's rise for the pleasant pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, for the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
He's teleconferencing this evening. Commissioner Reddick?
Here.
Commissioner Polgar?
Here.
Vice Chair Benjamin?
Present.
And Chair Holt?
Here.
So all the commissioners are presently at this meeting, the teleconference.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from February 26, 2019.
Through the chair, I had some, I guess I'm not sure if I'd call them corrections, but just clarifications. I think in the, on page three, if I understood Ms. Burke's comments in the public forum, I think she wanted to know what the infill number was on the upside as opposed to the out. Oh, can you hear me a little better now? I'm sorry. So I think she wanted to know what the upside numbers were. I'm not sure what outside number means, so I could be wrong about that, but that was how I read her, I read her comment.
She meant outside downtown. It was an inside of downtown, yes.
Stand corrected, I had no idea what that meant, now that makes sense. Then on the page four, in the discussion of relocation of the pond, I thought the comment I had was pertaining to changes that would enhance habitat would be okay. Changes that would not enhance habitat, probably more problematic. So I think that was, I'm not sure if it was on page three or elsewhere in the comments. Then on page five, at the very bottom, when we were talking about the infrastructure, I assumed that it wasn't just septic sewer, but also stormwater sewer. So to be clear, we're talking about water and stormwater sewer and septic sewer. At least that was my perception of the question. Yes, with respect to Dolores. Then on page six, with respect to the frog ponds, I know everyone here knows it, just so that the minutes are clear for people who might not. The frog is actually not the Pacific tree frog, it's the California red-legged frog. And the frog is threatened, it's not endangered. But we do have to consider endangered because of the potential habitat for San Francisco garter snake. And on page seven, at the very top, the second part of the comment sounded like what I was trying to say. The first part, I'm not sure if that should read, it currently reads hazards are just within a specific property. And I think that's a statement of concern about how it kind of read in the current plan, but the problem is that houses aren't contained within specific property. They should be, they should not be viewed as just within a property. With respect to TDRs on the bullet, there was the need to clarify the interaction between TDRs and lot retirement. And there was a reference at the last bullet on that, in that large part of page seven, that mentions Anne Riley in parentheses. And for people who weren't there and don't have context, we should probably clarify that this was a reference to Anne Riley giving a presentation to the Planning Commission on March 26. Other than that, I move to approve.
I just want to make one clarification. On page three, Mr. Ferrer mentioned that he meant to say a cove that was not a cove on page three, and it should say cove, not code, and I typed code, so we'll change that.
Thank you, that sounds like a good improvement. So, anybody else had changes?
Any other changes, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Hernandez, the teleconference didn't work out last meeting, so he was considered absent.
Oh, that's right, okay, so we need to make that amendment on the present section there.
Oh, good point.
Yes, you're right. I had that, but.
Yeah, I actually.
No, he was at the last meeting, I'm sorry, that was the meeting before last, you're right, no, he was here.
Ricky, we're here.
He was here, yeah.
This is regarding the study session, that you are here.
You were a week, it was a week.
No, so yeah, this is for February 26th, so it's correct in terms of everybody who's here.
That's correct.
We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. All right. So with that, open up the general public comment period, this is the time for public comments for items not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak, you can fill out a green card or jump up and wave up and down right now. Not seeing anybody, we're closing the public comment period, and we can move to our first public hearing item, coastal development permit, project 1A, go for it. This is Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This project involves the subdivision of one lot into eight lots, and construction of eight new single-family residences, and is essentially the last undeveloped parcel within Ocean Colony. Also included with the project, thank you, is, you know, the associated landscape improvements, stormwater management improvements, and a lot retirement program of seven legal lots within North Wavecrest. The permits requested, coastal development permit, architectural review, vesting tentative subdivision map, planned unit development plan, and use permit. As far as the noticing goes, the site was posted a couple of weeks ago, prior to tonight's meeting. Notice was published in the Half Moon Bay Review, and notices were sent out to all the neighbors within 300 feet, as required by our code. The development to the west, the current portion of Carnoustie was approved back in 2007. And after my presentation, the applicant's going to give a little more background on that. This slide shows the site and surrounding area, aerial photograph. Let's see, the project is, the site is zoned, planned unit development, Ocean Colony, and the land use, general plan designation is planned development district. Here are the key, some of the key points for the Planning Commission to consider, and I'll go into a little more depth on these in the upcoming slides. Here's the existing condition of the property lines for the subject property. And, sorry. The site is currently vacant, and previously a concrete block building, septic system and leach field were removed from the site roughly last year. And this slide indicates the proposed subdivision, the new eight lots, and Carnoustie Court is what it's being referenced as. The eight new homes would, for the most part, utilize this similar floor plan as the existing Carnoustie development to the west, and the exterior finishes and architectural design would be distinct however, but floor plans would be repeated throughout for the most part. The project would be, you know, essentially as I mentioned before, an extension of the planned unit development that exists to the west, comprises the last vacant lot within Ocean Colony. It is considered within a visual resource area, planned unit development, and thus story poles were installed for one of the eight new homes to give, you know, an indication as to the, sort of the massing. And this photograph I took this afternoon during the rainstorm that we had for about 30 minutes today. But this was from Redondo Beach Road, and as you can see, it's, you know, consistent with the surrounding houses, you know, to the east and the west. As far as the stormwater goes, the, what's being proposed is integrating the stormwater from the eight new lots into the existing filtration system for Carnoustie. And as you, it's kind of difficult to see on this, but the arrows indicate the flow into the existing system to the west. And then eventually outfall into the detention pond that's within the golf course to the south. This, the whole stormwater approach has been reviewed by our engineering division, and they've determined that it does exceed the requirements associated with stormwater management. As far as grading and drainage, there will be some cutting and filling associated with the projects, and roughly a little under, it's estimated that a little under 700 cubic yards of soil will be offal from the site to allow for the construction of the four, the eight new homes. Now as far as SEQA goes, we did, we did have a, some biological analysis of the site, and a biological resource reconnaissance report was prepared, and no impact to biological resources were identified within the report. Approval of the project would not result in any significant effect relating to traffic, and a traffic analysis was prepared for the eight new lots. Similarly, we looked at the, you know, potential air quality impacts from the eight houses, and it did not, you know, they, the houses would not exceed any threshold of significance related to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And the subdivision improvements themselves would include extension of the existing utilities to the eight new lots, and, you know, as you can see in this slide, a new cul-de-sac would be constructed. All of this would be private and included in Ocean Colony. Comprehensive landscape plan was also included. The lots to the north are set aside to allow for the future homeowners to, you know, choose what they would like in the back. As far as heritage trees, there are seven heritage trees on the site, which would be removed to allow for the new improvements, but 62 new trees would be planted to, you know, offset the seven that would be removed. In conclusion, you know, we, the, the project does conform to the visual resource standards that are identified in our code. A biological resource assessment was prepared, you know, that, you know, the, so thus we feel a categorical exemption, the infill exemption would be appropriate for this project. The houses are in conformance with our design standards. And we're supportive of the project, now this would, the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the city council, who ultimately have the authority on this project. Let's see. So we'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions. The applicant's here also, and I think you would like to give a quick presentation when appropriate.
Okay, great. So before we go to the applicant, are there any clarifying questions of staff?
If the chair pleases, I'd like to disclose an ex parte communication I had last week with Mr. Bruce Russell, CEO of Kenmark, who's here tonight. And at Bruce's invitation, I met with him and got his view of the history of the Carnoustie projects, some of the details of Carnoustie Four. We looked at elevations and, and some of these same maps, and he answered several questions I had about tree removal and lot retirement and other things. And in the course of that, I followed up with Scott on some, some further follow-up questions. For people who have a hard copy of my email there, I wanted to point out that I made one misstatement in here where I, I said that Bruce had told me that a small amount of diesel fuel discovered on the site had already been cleaned up, but that isn't the case. He talked to me about the intention to have that done as part of the grading, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thank you. Any other clarifying questions at this time, or do we want to hear from the applicant?
I'm thinking that after we hear the applicant's presentation, maybe some questions that might come up would be clarified.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you, Chair. So with that, please, Mr. Russell.
I always have trouble with this microphone. You can hear me now, okay?
We found that sometimes it's easier just to hold the mic up rather than lean over and rupture a vertebrae or something.
My little pointer here, I need two hands, I won't put it in your eyes, I promise. Just give me a moment for them to get set up, you ready? What Mr. Leggett's putting up here are the color boards from 12 years ago. I kept the ones from the Carnoustie Phase One through Three project because I just sensed that they'd come in handy at some point. They're a little worse for wear, but they give you the idea of the stone and the colors and the roofing materials. You'll also see that on some of the slides. So could you go to the first slide? So this is a picture of Ocean Colony and aerial, and so everybody understands where we are. We're right here, in this location right here. And this is the Carnoustie Phase One through Three project right here. That project's all now complete, all 32 homes. This is all of Ocean Colony. Ocean Colony was originally approved in 1972, when it was approved for 1,050 units and about 440 hotel rooms. That approval was then reflected in the 1993 LCP that was certified by the Coastal Commission, which is the current LCP. The density in Ocean Colony is less than 600 units and much less than 440 hotel rooms. So the total density is about, give or take, 55 to 60% of what was approved and what was certified by the Coastal Commission in 1993. This is the last subdivision in Ocean Colony, this two-point, give or take 2.6 acres, and the eight houses. What I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the Carnoustie Phase One through Three project, because I think it's really relevant to this project, because this is really just a simple extension of that project. That project involved 32 single-family houses, and there they are right here. The original application was filed in 1999, and the project was approved in 2007. That was eight years of 200-page EIR, three biological surveys, three traffic surveys, consultation with the regional water board, the Coastal Commission, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Department of Fish and Game, of course, the city. And in 2007, the project was unanimously approved by the city council, by the Planning Commission and by the city council. The project was appealed to the Coastal Commission, and the first time in the history of the Coastal Act, a significant subdivision appeal was dismissed by the Coastal Commission for finding of no substantial issue on a 12-0 vote. The, this project was the subject of a development agreement with the city, and like I said, a very extensive EIR that was pretty comprehensive. And the reason why I raise this is because in the context of approving this project and working with the Coastal Commission and all the resource agencies, Phase Four is right here, it's adjacent to this project. It shares the same utilities, it shares the same environmental setting, it shares the same homeowners association, the same community. And all the, both the city and all of the resource agencies, and ultimately the Coastal Commission, found that the project was consistent with the general plan, with the local coastal plan, and with all the ordinances in Half Moon Bay. All those decisions were made in 2007 and confirmed by the Coastal Commission. A really important part of this project was the retirement of 34 lots. This was the first subdivision in the history of Half Moon Bay to voluntarily agree to retire 34 lots and to add them to the 228 acres that we conveyed to post when we discontinued the Wavecrest project. Those 34 lots are in North Wavecrest, and as part of the Carnoustie Phase Four project, we're continuing along that line and retiring another seven lots for the lots that we're creating. And the same location generally is the 34 lots that went to post. Caitlin, can you move on to the next one? So this is Phase Four. This is just a cul-de-sac continuing off of the existing Bay Hill Road. Seven of the floor plans are identical, virtually identical, to the floor plans that were used in Carnoustie Phase One through Three. The architectural review, the design review was all approved for those units. None of them repeat. We don't use the same colors, we don't use the same materials, the same roofing, the same elevations in any of the houses. So they all vary, and that's what these boards kind of show. So it's really just taking 32 units and adding eight more for a total of 40 units on the combined property. The, the project is basically an infill project, it qualifies under the SEQA exemptions. It's in the city, it's consistent with the general plan, it's less than five acres. There's no impacts to biology, there's no habitat value. The biological reconnaissance established that. There's no traffic impacts, noise or air, and there's adequate utilities. And so that's the reason for the infill exemption here, for this extension of Carnoustie Phase Four. Like Scott mentioned, this is the last subdivision in Ocean Colony. It'll bring the total density to a little under 600, again, far below the approved density at 1,050. This subdivision was incorporated into the homeowners association, Ocean Colony, by a miraculous vote of 94% of all the people that live in Ocean Colony. That's 94, not 94% of the people voting, that's 94% of every homeowner in Ocean Colony. And they approved the project, and they approved the bringing of this into Ocean Colony and under the CCNRs. Like I mentioned, maybe you could put up the next slide? The lot, oh, yeah, let me just kind of walk through this quickly. Unlike some subdivisions, you really don't have to guess what the houses are going to look like because these are the actual photographs of the units that are in Carnoustie. And so it's not a matter of surmising what the materials will be or what the elevations will be. These are seven of the eight houses that are already built. So unlike a lot of subdivisions, you can actually go out there and see these houses. Oh, let me go back to that last slide. They're very much consistent with the other architecture in Ocean Colony. These are five or six houses in Ocean Colony that show you that it's very consistent with the, with the community architecture and the houses that have been built since 1972 there. So these are the lots we're going to retire. There are, there's one lot here and six lots here, this is Redondo Beach Road, this is Highway One. We selected these lots because they're on Redondo Beach Road. One of the reasons why we became interested in acquiring this property because it was owned by a developer who was proposing to build or was planning on building 30 to 40 townhouses on Redondo Beach Road. We got involved after he acquired the property and persuaded him to sell us most of the property and to bring it within Ocean Colony, so there would be service through Ocean Colony and not off Redondo Beach Road. For those of you who have been here a long time, Redondo Beach Road's a very rural road. The north part of Redondo Beach Road is Wavecrest. A lot of habitat there, a lot of biological resources. And, you know, we feel that that road should be, and that area should be protected. And that's why we've proposed these lots for retirement, because if they're put in open space, that, I think, will be a good thing in terms of the potential for expansion or development in that area. So that's, that's why we chose these seven lots that we have remaining to retire them. Carnoustie Phase Four is one lot, and we're building eight, so that's where the seven came from, it's the net increase. Let me talk a little bit about storm drainage. Can you take that off, thanks? There are two ways to address the storm drainage. Ocean Colony has a much, a little more sophisticated system, if I could add, than what Scott mentioned. The system is a closed system. We collect all of the water through impervious surfaces and through downspouts into a closed system. We bring it to a very elaborate microfiltration vault at the end of the cul-de-sac in which we treat the stormwater and remove contaminants and other particles. And then, after it goes through that microfiltration system, it then gets transported to our sedimentation basin on the 15th hole. So it gets another treatment of sedimentation. But the most important part of this is the water then gets recycled and used as irrigation on the golf course. Unfortunately, I think as most of you know, we don't have recycled water in Half Moon Bay yet. But this is our attempt at recycling water coming off that subdivision. And the golf course, if you will, is the 150 acres of bioswale. This is, I like to think of it as the, as the best storm drainage and recycling system that you could imagine. And so we propose connecting to that system, Phase Four, to treat the water coming off this site. And I'm aware of the fact that, under the C3 guidelines, there's a lot of talk of bioswales, there's a lot of talk of stormwater harvesting, a lot of talk of splash blocks again, haven't talked about those for 20 or 30 years. But we think this is a better system, it's a much better system in terms of efficiency. We can collect all of this water, we can bring it to a vault, we can bring it to filtration systems, we can treat it, and then we can put it into our sedimentation basin, our ponds, for another seven days of holding. for another seven days of holding, and then we get to use the water to irrigate, so we don't have to buy more potable water, and we don't have to draw water from our wells. And so, that's the reason why we proposed this system as the best option, and I think the city agreed that it was, it would, it was an alternative method under the C-three guidelines, and it, it meets the requirements. Also want to talk a little bit about soil disposal. Excuse me. The site, when they built the golf course, they did a lot of artificial grading along Karnusti on both sides of the golf course, and they cut the natural grade and removed enormous amount of soil. And so, what you have is not a stepped site, but you have an artificial grade right along the roads and along the golf course. When we did Karnusti, we had to remediate that grade by going back to the top graphic surveys we had and the aerial photographs and creating more of a gentle slope. This project was the same way. Along Bay Hill, it was cut very badly in nineteen seventy-two, and we want to, we want to correct that. None of the soils here will be deposited anywhere in the coastal zone. In Karnusti, we agreed that no soil would ever be deposited in the coastal zone. None of it will be brought south onto the farms and illegally dumped. We will try to dispose of the six hundred to seven hundred cubic yards. To put that in perspective, Karnusti was over twenty thousand cubic yards. So, it's a very minor amount of dirt. We have needs for that on the ocean course within Halfbloom Bay. At the time we submit the grading permit, we will do a hauling route, we will do a biological reconnaissance of where we want to deposit the dirt on the golf course to fix some drainage problems and some other issues there. We deposited quite a bit of dirt from Karnusti on part of the golf course after getting permits and doing biological analysis. But this dirt will not end up in the coastal zone anywhere else. The last slide. I think people watching this and talk, listening about another eight units and another subdivision wonder what's in it for the public? Why should we approve this? What have you done to provide public benefits or to provide affordable housing? One of the things that we're pretty proud of is we're the only developer that's ever built low- and moderate-income housing in Halfbloom Bay as part of another subdivision. But as part of these forty units, we will have contributed two-point-one million dollars for affordable housing. Nobody's ever done that before. We have contributed over a million dollars in traffic mitigation fees that we voluntarily added a million to the normal fees when we did the first phase of Karnusti. Park fee is an extra five hundred thousand dollars beyond anything that's required under your ordinances. The list just goes on here, and probably, one of the things that we're most proud of is the lot retirement. Seven lots plus thirty-four, forty-one lots. Right now, those lots in Wavecrest are worth probably sixty thousand, but I put down thirty. That's another really significant contribution. We will have delivered, in exchange for the approval to build these subdivisions, almost six-point-seven million dollars in public benefits. That's a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars per unit. There's never been a subdivision in Halfbloom Bay that's achieved anything like that before. And, and it's legitimate for people to ask the question of, what's the public getting out of this? That's a legitimate question. So, I appreciate the opportunity to comment on some of this stuff. I'm available to answer questions. I suspect there are some questions, and I'll be happy to try to respond to them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, with that, we can bring it back, nothing further from staff, correct? Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
So, with the presentation that we just heard, I, I don't feel like I have any need to make an ex parte communication. I think the, I also had a conversation with the applicant. The information that he presented was exactly the information that we discussed. I don't think there's anything that's not now in the record that's pertinent to our decision-making. I do have a couple of questions. Can we put back up the slide? You know, the slide that shows the surrounding development and the open field, it was the second or third slide in the presentation? Right, uh, yes, right there, thank you. So, when I was, I went to look at the lot today, it was kind of hard. The fences made it tough to get in, but I was able to sort of peek over. And while I was peeking over, I looked in this area, there's a sort of a parking spot here that you can stop at and then sort of look around, and I noticed that the fence here has the, the concrete posts that the fences are drawn in are exposed in a way that shows there is substantial erosion. Is that where the retaining wall is going in, or is there a different spot for the retaining wall that was described in the project? That's up to, up to the chair, who answers the question. I wouldn't, I'm guessing the applicant would know the answer, but maybe Scott knows.
Scott, if you don't know, it doesn't look like you do. Does anyone have a response to that?
That's not where the retaining wall is going. The retaining wall is going along Bay Hill, and it's coming around the corner a little bit. The, the, here, let me, my thing, it's, I want to shine this in your eyes.
Yeah, thank you, I'm out of the way.
The retaining wall is going here, and then it's coming along here, and it's curling just a little bit right in here, and then it stops. The, the point that you're making is that slope will be eliminated.
Thank you.
And it'll be, that's one of the reasons why it has to be graded out, because the fence posts are being exposed, the concrete, and you're correct. That won't be there after this is graded out.
Okay, and the retaining wall will be maintained as a responsibility of the Ocean Colony Homeowners' Association at the end of our list?
The retaining wall that goes here and all along here and right to here is on the individual lot owners' property.
On the lot owner, I see.
Karnusti, we recorded restrictive covenants against all the houses along the golf course. There are two retaining walls there. Requiring them to maintain it, they can't alter it, they can't put stairs in it, they can't tear it down. And so, that's worked out well. I mean, no one's done that. The golf course has a really serious interest in maintaining that, and if somebody were to alter those things, I can assure you, the golf course would seek to enforce those restrictive covenants.
I also noticed that the, the, the storm sewers that drained on the road had some very full sediment traps adjacent to the, filled themselves. Under the proposed development, do they stay the same as they are now, or?
Yes, they do. I mean, the, the, those are, well, during construction, there's a whole nother best management practice requirements, but the, all the inlets that we'll put in will have that. Right now, the site is draining, you might have noticed that, seriously across the road, and that won't happen, because what's happening is sediments coming across the road from down that slope, because it has no drainage right now, and it comes onto the sidewalk, it goes down the curbs, and then it goes into the inlet, right in, in this location down here, and that's not a good thing. And so, we will be able to collect all of that drainage coming in that site and bring it back to the Karnusti court and then to the filtration system. Right now, you can see it's kind of flooding the road there.
Right. And on, to the, to the question of road flooding, on the north side of the subdivision, so, up adjacent to the, the streets that are, the, the homes that are adjacent to the homes that front onto Redondo Beach Road, that area is also going to drain south?
Yes. All that, all of this will collect, there's a grading plan actually as part of the plan, but it grades all towards the road, all collected, comes this way, gets connected to the existing storm drain and goes down to the filtration system. I mean, one of the optimum things here is that all the utilities are in the ground right here. I mean, they're all right, right, located right here. It's just a connection to all of these utilities that are already there.
But they have the capacity for treating this area? They were designed with capacity?
They have the capacity for twice as many houses.
I see.
As the eight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, additional questions?
By the way, that, that's all been submitted by the engineers, the proof of that capacity and things like that.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Additional questions of staff or the applicant? Questions before we open up the public comment period?
So, I was a little bit confused about the off-haul of the, I think it was, I don't know how much, how many cubic yards, maybe seven hundred, it sounded like. And so, I didn't quite understand if that, so that would be used in the, and maybe, you can decide how to, a chair can decide how to, who should answer, but it sounded like it was not going to be, end up in the coastal zone, but was going to be used for the golf course, something on the golf course. So, I wanted a little clarification on that. And then also, I was wondering, is, it sounded like there was some amount of dirt that might be contaminated with diesel, and so, is that the, what, which pots of dirt are we talking about? So, just a little clarification.
Would you actually respond to that? Feel free, please.
I guess I might have misspoken. It won't be, six or seven hundred cubic yards of off-haul won't be deposited anywhere in the coastal zone, other than on the golf course. The history of Halfbloom Bay has been, a lot of dirt has been deposited south of Halfbloom Bay on farms and culverts, and that won't happen. And any condition you want to impose can be imposed. In Karnusti, there was a condition. But there are places on the ocean course where we have drainage problems, and we need some dirt, we need to fix some drainage problems. And they're not in sensitive areas, they're on grass, and, and so, it's a good use of that dirt. And that's where, I, I didn't mean it won't be on the golf course, but it won't be anywhere else in the coastal zone, you can feel assured of that.
Thank you.
Your other question? I'm sorry.
It sounded like there was some amount of dirt that might be contaminated?
We did a Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment of the site. We did twenty-three borings on the site. We're very fixated on environmental issues like that, particularly for residential construction. And in this, right in this corner right here where the old cinder block building was, it was partially on this site and partially on the existing site. I think you had a lot split, you know, a couple of weeks ago for that site. There was about, somewhere between on our site, five to seven cubic yards of diesel. That was a truck, they stored their trucks there, very shallow, at about twelve inches, very easy to remediate, doesn't have to go to a Class A dump. You could remediate it by just spreading it and letting it air out, but we will remove it. It'll be part of the grading permit. We'll submit compliance statements from environmental, our environmental consultant or the contractor we hired to remove it and dispose of it at the appropriate dump site. It won't be left on the site.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and just open up the public forum. Steve, unless you have questions you want to ask?
I had several questions last week, having to do with the tree removal, removal and lot retirement and the soil conservation, but, but Jill and Scott were very kind to, to answer that in detail. So, the, the only thing remaining in my mind is, as Bruce pointed out, that some of this contaminated soil is on the adjacent lot to the north of Karnusti Four. It would be nice to know that there'd be a process in place to get that removed at the appropriate time as well.
Do you want to respond to that at all, or?
We are able to address that when we get a coastal development permit application for that site. It's possible that the owner of the property could coordinate with this developer and have it done at the same time, and we will suggest that to the owner, but you, you definitely have a mechanism for taking care of that.
Agreed. And so, just to clarify, Bridget, so the questions that Steve had submitted, are those available to the public if they had any questions, or are they up there? Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure that, since we referenced them, that they were available to everybody. Did you want to, Jill?
I just want to make sure that you know that the city engineer is here tonight, because we, we knew there might be quite a few engineering-related questions, so you don't need to just rely on your planners, you've got, you've got somebody back there. So, Mazir is here.
Thank you very much. So, additional questions there?
So, one, one thing I did actually want to, a clarification, where are the, the heritage trees? I couldn't really tell from the, if, maybe it'd be nice to point those out.
Yes, they're, they're along the, the Bay Hill front edge, and then a few more along the eastern side of the, of the subject property. And actually, on, on my PowerPoint, I have a, one of the, the tree removal sheet of the, the plan set.
Okay, Scott, maybe while you're doing that, we'll just go ahead and open up the public forum and take any public comments, and then, and then we can bring it back and discuss that. One more comment from the applicant, absolutely.
Let me just respond to the heritage trees, so that it's clear. We planted these trees as part of Karnusti Phase Three. They were not there before. There, there's one pine right here, Monterey pine, and the rest are cypress. Out of the, there's one pine and six cypress. Of the six cypress, four out of the six are one-half inch beyond the twelve-inch requirement at the height limit. And so, we planted these as ornamental trees, you know, until, because to shield the site from the golf course, that's not to minimize that they are over twelve inches at the right height, but they're, they haven't been there for fifty years or seventy years. I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Very good, thank you. So, with that, we're going to open up the public comment period.
I'm sorry, the chair, I wanted, am I too late to follow up with one other thing on the?
Why don't we go ahead and hold that until, until we complete that? So, I don't have any, I don't have any green cards. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? I don't see any, so we're going to close that, and Commissioner Riddick, you had a question?
Well, Ma, since you took the trouble to be here, I did have one other question about the diesel contamination. Is, is, and maybe just speaking generally, how much confidence would one have that in the period since it was discovered as part of the EIR work, that it hasn't spread appreciably or, or migrated to other surrounding areas?
Generally speaking, the transmission, the transmission of hydrocarbons, as long as there's not an, an active site, it's pretty slow. So, I'm fairly confident to say that the location of the, based on the date of the borings, is pretty close to where they're going to be. And I know that when the contractor will do their, their sort of remediation, there'll be quite a bit of oversight and monitoring of the materials coming, that'll be leaving and testing of that before it actually gets to the landfill site. So, there'll, there's another layer of oversight there.
Thank you.
Brian, may I ask you a question?
Yes, please. Commissioner Hernandez?
So, just as a follow-up, so, I, I have some familiarity with contamination of soils, previous experience in life, and so, I heard you say, this is a, you're fairly confident that this isn't an issue, but for the public record, could you express, like, what do we think the actual amount of exposure of diesel is? Is it like gas tank, is it a container, or is it like several containers of gas, like, diesel? Help us understand the context of what we think has happened here for the public record, just so we can understand what we're looking at from a risk perspective.
Is there somebody on staff who can speak to that? Or should we bring it back over to the applicant? Feel free.
We're going to hear, I think, about the Phase One and Phase Two findings.
Yeah, we, we submitted a very extensive Phase One and Phase Two by Green Environmental Inc. They're one of the, I think they're a very, they're one of the county's recommended environmental consultants. We've used them on other projects. They submitted a very comprehensive Phase Two with the remediation plan, and they indicated that this was a really minor issue, given the quantity and given the shallowness of the diesel, and that it would be very easy to remove it during excavation. They will be present when it's removed. If we need to do subsequent testing, once we, once we remove it in that area to determine that it's been removed, we'll do that. But they have a recommendation in their Phase Two as to how to remove this. Like, like Commissioner Hernandez, I have been involved in two or three much, really significant types of contamination removal issues, and we're very sensitive to this area, to this issue. This is hydrocarbons and diesel fuel, pretty easy thing to remove. It's not that difficult of a problem. And it's a very small quantity. I mean, it's literally less than about eighteen inches deep, and, I mean, to put this in perspective, five cubic yards is one-sixth of a truckload.
So, would it be fair to say, to characterize this to Commissioner Hernandez's point? This would be a spill or release that might be consistent with traditional agricultural activities or something like that?
Yes.
But not necessarily an industrial site or some other?
This, this was a This was a dairy farm for, you know, 50 years. Somebody spilled a tank of diesel fuel when they were filling up their farm equipment and spilled it on the ground. And it got into the soil. And people remove this all the time in agricultural situations and in farm situations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I did, I was able, I was able to find the actual numbers in the environmental site assessment, and it's
Could you speak a little closer to the mic?
It's estimated to be roughly 10 cubic yards.
10 cubic yards, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just following on the diesel, if it's, if it is across another parcel that's not the subject of development, is one of the recommended conditions a dam to keep the, keep the site that's being developed from being contaminated? Or do we just live with the possibility of bleed over?
Yes, I would suggest that that could be a condition.
I'm happy to remove it on the other side as well. There's probably three cubic yards. You could put that in a wheelbarrow, give or take. But I don't own the property. I mean,
Hard to believe they wouldn't be enthusiastic about that.
Your building inspector owns the property, so presumably he'll cooperate. The other thing I should mention is, we did 23 borings on this site. And this was, there was nothing anywhere else. I mean, 23 borings in two acres is a lot of borings.
Thank you. That was my only question with respect to the diesel.
Additional questions or discussion? Commissioner Polgar?
On a slightly different note, I still had a couple clarifying questions, actually. And this is one that I might have just missed. I didn't understand exactly what's happening with the bay hill, bay hill road as it heads north. Is that, that still connects to, to Redondo? Or is there, is there access through there? No, okay. And it'll stay, and it's just for construction, but, okay.
Please, keep going.
I did want to find out, is the, so I understood that the landscaping for the north side properties, the backyard landscaping is the, is the landowner or the purchaser's responsibility. Is that, is that similar to what was done for the first three phases?
Yes, the only landscaping we do in backyards is along the golf course, so we can control that because of the retaining walls and because of drainage and things like that. And frankly, because we want to control what the backyards along the golf course look like. I should mention, if there's anything different between Phase One and Phase Three, Phase Four is the adoption of your irrigation zero-scape ordinance. And we have submitted a conceptual landscaping plan, a lot more native plants, a lot less turf, a lot of different irrigation systems, different meters, separate meters for two of the sites because they exceed, the landscaping exceeds 5,000 square feet. So, I mean, you have a very strict ordinance at this point, and the water district, you know, follows that. And so, the landscaping will be more native, more zero-scape, less turf than Carnoustie Phase One through Three.
I did, actually, that is something that I was interested to see in the plant list. There definitely, definitely were native plants there. I did see some that may seem a little bit concerning, like they, I, I'm assuming they've been used throughout Ocean Colony, throughout the PUD. But a couple of the trees that are perhaps borderline kind of invasive types. So it's just something to consider to emphasize the natives, particularly because, I guess it, it's, you know, it is bordering on, to the north is the, is open space. So the fewer plants that are introduced that are potentially could spread is better. So just that's something to note, as a preference, it would be better to have the native plants. It's very hard to read in the size. I had to use the big plans. So that's just a comment.
Anything else? Okay.
Through the chair? So I should have paid more attention to the landscaping. With Commissioner Polgar on board, I knew that she'd pick up on a lot of this. But how, how does the solar access for this planting compare with the rest of Carnoustie?
I'm sorry.
Solar access, if someone wanted to use solar panels, are we getting trees that are blocking their solar access?
It's going to get a lot bigger. But no. Solar is an interesting question. We didn't talk about that. And, and energy-saving and water-saving things that are going into these houses. But I have not, I, before we submit final landscaping drawings, I will take a harder look at the height and the size of the trees and whether or not they would affect southwest orientation of the roofs. We don't normally put trees very close to houses, but I have not looked at that issue. And before we submit, you know, final landscaping drawings, we'll, I'll take a harder look at that.
Yeah, like, like Commissioner Polgar, I'd be grateful. I want to give these people who occupy these rooms every opportunity to be as close to zero consumption of fossil fuel as we can.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Anything additional?
No other questions, just with respect to comments. It sounded like after the clarification on that the fill was, that was, the cut that was being removed from this in many cases would be going elsewhere in the site. Just to clarify, there'll be some coastal development permit process, whether it's a CDP or an exemption. I don't know enough about the location or what our standards are, but that would be a separate process. We're not approving that explicitly at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And there would be separate permits that probably aren't for the planning commission with respect to the, the stuff that's getting taken off-site?
Yeah, that, that will be taken care of with the city engineer, and we'll be looking at it too with planning. But that's fully regulated.
So my only other comment was, in, in the application packet, we saw a couple of different flavors of water treatment. And based on the staff's evaluation and on the applicant's evaluation, the tie-in to their, their system really appealed to me. I hope that if we can express a preference as part of our thinking to make that clear. I couldn't see a reason why we wouldn't want to go that way. So the record shows nobody disagreed.
Don't, don't necessarily disagree, and I think we would be happy to entertain a suggestion on that in any motion.
Okay, so, let's see. I have CDP or CDP exemption for the landfill, a look for non, a preference, strong preference for natives in the landscaping, and a preference for preserving solar access, and a preference for the, the version of water treatment that was proposed by the applicant. Was there anything else to tailor to the motion?
Well, I think we still want to hear from Commissioner Riddick and Commissioner Hernandez.
I'm sorry. So I'm not, I'm not moving yet. That's what I've got so far.
Keep your list going. Commissioner Riddick, do you have any comments?
No, I just wanted to reiterate my thanks to staff for answering my, 90% of my questions last week. And I'm probably responsible for dragging Maz out here tonight, so thank you for being here. No, I'd echo all the things you were just listing, Jimmy, as being positive amendments to the process.
I forgot dam or removal of the adjacent wheelbarrow of diesel.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, you have anything we want to add?
It's more than a wheelbarrow of diesel, but I do, I have one, a couple of points. Commissioner Riddick, I know you're new to the, this commission, but we always appreciate the diligence and the questions that need to be asked, and we all have our own path to follow those. So I really appreciate the approach that you're taking. And then with respect to Carnoustie Partners LLC, I, I just think that, you know, there are many projects that we get before us, and there are people who really go the extra mile. And this is another example, when we worked with Carnoustie, where as a neighbor, as a partner with the community, they really go the extra mile, they really think through things and be receptive to our feedback. And so, I know staff and Bruce Russell have worked really hard to get where we're at. I just want to acknowledge that this is actually exceptional as a public community that we're working through these types of things together. And the remediation that's been recommended, the way we're approaching this, is, is really the right way to go. So I'm enthusiastic about this project and enthusiastic about the way that staff has, has engaged the applicant. So I'm very supportive of everything we're doing here.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Polgar?
I wanted to, just a comment, I, I definitely appreciated the, the lot retirement, the voluntary lot retirement in North Wavecrest. I think that's a really good, positive. I was very excited to see that. And especially along Redondo Beach Road, you know, adjacent to it. I think one thing, just to point out, is that there were kind of two different views of the lots. And I think that the one where there are, it's, you know, the parcels shown with the green highlight is, is actually, is accurate, is the correct one. There was one where I think it was just hand-drawn in. It was a little confusing. So I think in future, just to stick with the parcel one that shows the, because otherwise I happen to know some of those lots are not, they're otherwise protected or owned, so the ones in the hand-drawn one.
So that there's no confusion about that. We have submitted the tunnel reports for the seven lots and the legal descriptions. That was a mistake. I actually tried to send you the correct version, but I couldn't get through to your email this afternoon. But what we showed tonight, it, some, we misdrew it. But the, but the lots are legally described and the assessor parcel numbers, there'll be no confusion. There'll be no confusion about what seven lots they are.
I did have, this is a question just as in, being kind of, since I'm new to the commission, and obviously I can tell that there's, this has been in the works for a long time. And, and I guess one of the things that, this is a bigger picture thing, I'm supportive of the project and everything, but I just was wondering about how, the decision about how to develop in terms of the density of this area, this Carnoustie, you know, in this Phase Four. You know, I realize this is not an area where you're going to get, like, you know, really, you know, affordable housing, you know, right there and stuff like that. But it was just interesting, I was wondering why there wasn't, because since there isn't the density constraint because of the PUD, you know, limit, you know, currently development's way under the maximum number of houses. You know, was there a consideration for doing like duplexes or something that maybe isn't affordable but is a little bit more in the reach of, of, you know, folks? And just as a question, I'm not opposing the project or anything, I just want to find out what the thought process was behind that.
That's a complex question. I think it's a matter of compatibility with the neighborhood. There are some townhouses in Ocean Colony, not many. I think affordable housing, like I said, we're the only private developer that's ever built low-income housing in Half Moon Bay. And we're clearly the only developer that ever contributed $2.1 million to be used for low-income housing. We actually proposed a low-income housing project at Church and Kelly that unfortunately didn't get built. It's, it's Ocean Colony, I mean, more density, the homeowners there would, the person who bought this property had been talking about 30 or 40 townhouses there, that would have been a war in terms of that level of density off Redondo Beach Road. I think any level of density off Redondo Beach Road would have been an error. And I, even if I wanted to build 30 units of condominiums or townhouses, more affordable in Ocean Colony, not sure I could have gotten the community's support for that. So those decisions get made. This is the last subdivision in Ocean Colony. I'm really hopeful that the city will take the $2.1 million. And I would love to participate in building affordable housing in a location where there are other amenities, public transportation and other things that would serve that community better than a subdivision in Ocean Colony. If that makes any sense.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
One more? So segueing off of the solar access comment, which I appreciated your receptiveness to. I know that these four plans are quite similar to the existing ones. Since I don't live in Ocean Colony, can you tell me whether there's electric vehicle capabilities in the drive, in the garages?
No one asked me the question of sustainability or energy?
Considerate asked.
I understand that. I have to get my notes.
While the applicant does that, we'll just note, Building Code requires that every new home have ready for a charger. So at a minimum, you're going to get that in every house.
We put two chargers in. We put a 220 charger and a 110, the really super-duper one, and then the other one.
I want the, I want at least a NEMA 1450.
You asked a question. This is a list of some of the energy-saving and sustainability things we put in houses. You know, as a developer, you have to make decisions. You have to balance sustainability issues, dependable and proven materials and, and construction methods. You have to consider the other public benefits you're providing as part of the subdivision, like affordable housing and parks, and how much you can afford. We do a lot. We're probably the most airtight houses that we have ever built. And for the first time, we are going to pre-wire the entire house for solar. And the reason why we're not going to install solar at this point is because I'm a big believer, I appreciate net metering, but I'm a big believer in battery storage, and the batteries are not good enough yet. We are going to direct the pre-wiring in locations where they won't interfere with roof trusses, roof framing, roof jacks. We're going to work with solar installers to decide where the panels would go if the homeowner decided to do this, and then we're going to run conduit to where we could locate batteries and where we could get to the panel. And the other list of things that we do in terms of air infiltration protection, we use, we use all the highest efficiency appliances, the highest efficiency water heaters and furnaces. We use things like one and an eighth inch plywood glued so that we have much more insulation between floors. We, all of our insulation's far beyond R19. We glue insulation on attic access points so the air doesn't get in. We do a lot. As a developer, you pick and choose how much, you know, if you have 30, 40, 50,000 to spend on a house, you make decisions about where you think you get the most bang for your buck, and that's our list. We do a lot more than just on that list, a lot of other things. But we will, I mean, solar will be something we are really focused on in terms of the pre-wiring. It'll be the first time we've ever done it, and hopefully the whole battery system will move along in the next two or three years. You know, California did not impose mandatory storage. They imposed solar panels, but starting next year, but not storage. But if the homeowners, they'll, they'll be ready to go, and we'll focus on the, on the landscaping issue you raised. I will take a look at where those trees are going.
I consider the question answered.
All right. Any other questions, comments from us? Well, yeah, I just, I want to, I want to echo Commissioner Hernandez's comments. I appreciate Commissioner Riddick's questions. Get into the right place. It was helpful to see those ahead of time and appreciate the applicant being here and your responsiveness and thoroughness on all this, so. So with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion with Jimmy's list.
Yeah, I moved the resolution next in order with clarification for communicating the commission's strong preference for using native plants in the plantings for landscaping that preserves solar access. That the fill, of course, will be subject, the movement of fill will be subject to the coastal development permit process or the exemption as is determined appropriate. And of course, the grading permits, well, we don't actually strike grading permits, that's implied. That there either be the removal of the polluted diesel, the hydrocarbon polluted soil on the adjacent property or a dam to prevent the pollution on that parcel from reinfiltrating into this area. And clarifying that the lots that are being retired are, timeout, what was, what's the right term for it? are, timeout, what was, what's the right term for it?
I think there's nothing that needs to be, it's all done.
Okay. So strike the reference to which lots, everybody knows which lots. That's my motion, which is mine.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
I second.
Okay, we got two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to our next item of business is the 2019 Annual Housing Element Report.
And I'm going to jump into that in just one second, just to note that this project that you just took action on, your recommendation will now be forwarded to the city council. We will have another notice public hearing before them where you're looking at May, and we'll let you know that process as it moves along. All right, Housing Element Annual Progress Report, this is a required reporting that we do. Every jurisdiction in the state of California, cities and counties need to complete their Housing Element Report and submit it. There's no presentation, there's, you don't need a presentation, we'll just talk. And they're due April 1st, and as part of our process, we like to simply bring it to our planning commission, and we also will bring it through city council next week. It's formulaic from the perspective of these tables that you see. We have no control over their formatting, and it's a lot easier to read online. We did our best to make them big, and we understand that it's, it's a little tricky here, the way, the way this lays out. This is a bigger report. You've, you've received these in the past, and they used to be about six pages on eight and a half by 11 landscape tables. What's happened here is state legislations in 2017 that the housing package, as had been referred to, and of course, we're, we're expecting probably another big housing package this year as well. But that housing package changed housing element reporting requirements. In the past, we were, most jurisdictions would report issuance of building permit for when we count units. The city of Half Moon Bay opted with the Housing and Community Development Department's concurrence that it was more appropriate for Half Moon Bay to report certificates of occupancy, because sometimes it takes longer to build in the coastal zone, and we wanted to very specifically report production. And there's, that's the clearest milestone that we could come up with for production. So in this housing element cycle, housing element cycles are eight-year cycles. This has been in the last two cycles, you're in cycle five of Housing Element Law, and previously, housing elements were on five-year cycles. But a cycle and a half ago, we started doing more regional relevant planning through your COG, through A-BAG in this case. And we, the regional plan complied with, I think it was SB 375, for sustainability approaches which focused housing and development in places that could serve it with transit and, you know, what you're actually seeing over the hill that the other cities are doing. That's a lot of reaction and requirement from that regional planning perspective, and that let us move in because we were, we complied to having this eight-year cycle, which is really helpful. If you're, I remember being on five-year cycles and you felt like you got it one done, and then you were turning around and starting your next housing element. Now we actually really get to see how we're doing with production, as well as how we're doing in terms of implementing programs. But why you've got all these tables and these, especially this table A2, and it's quite wide, and there's four sections of it, we tried to break it into pieces that would work better for you. They're now tracking by assessor's parcel number for different milestones in, in the reporting year. So what you've got here is every application that was received for residential development in 2018 for a planning entitlement, every planning entitlement for residential development that was approved in 2018, then every building permit that was issued for housing in 2018, and every certificate of occupancy that was concluded in 2018. And so obviously, you've got development that's at all different stages of the cycle. You may actually see a couple where they went all the way through in one year, like somebody came in in January with an ADU and they were able, because it's small, they were able to complete it. But for the most part, these are going to span over a year or two or quite a few more in some cases, and that's to be expected. The accountability of this, so what, what we would expect to see going forward is they're going to watch how, how this is going to be, tuck and tuck and through, through this mill of entitlements and building permits and getting concluded. So it's all about accountability and transparency in terms of implementing our housing element. Now, we also are presenting the affordability levels. Half Moon Bay's RENA, which is our regional housing needs allocation, that is updated on this eight-year cycle. The RENA is 240 units. About half of those units are supposed to be affordable to very low or low-income households. And we typically get production at that level when we actually have a, have an affordable housing developer able to move forward with a project. So what we've been getting so far in this cycle are market rate units, and then some units that we've been allowed to count as moderate, although we'll probably have to do some rental survey, lease, lease surveys at some point in time. But we've been allowed to count accessory dwelling units and some types of multifamily development in the moderate income category. So one little trick that we have is we may have to go back and revise 2015, 16, and 17 because we've reported certificates of occupancy. In 2018, we're reporting building permits. I'm going into this minutia with you because I don't want anybody to be surprised. If we go back and change numbers from old documents that have been in your public record and have been posted on the website, and were done appropriately, there's no sleight of hand here, but we may need to go back and see if we have to switch them out to when building permits were issued. Otherwise, we're, we're going to miss some units, and we certainly don't want to do that. You should get credit for everything you've done, and we're going to be very careful about that and communicate with HCD. This is the first year, we're not the only city that is going to be tromping through this data. I want to thank Scott's here, he worked like a trooper, running reports and numbers for us, and we pored over this and tried to make sure we didn't miss a single unit, and that we had them categorized appropriately all the way through. Now, I do want to bring your attention to Table D. Table D is the one that is portrait oriented, it's towards the back. It's two pages, and again, it reads a lot better on the screen. This table is presenting in, in short form, every single program that's in your certified housing element. In the past, we would just highlight programs that we had in particular done some work towards. But because this, this approach is so much more detailed, and we really wanted to, to get off to a great start, we went ahead and put every single program in here and acknowledged the status of the city's work towards meeting the objective of those programs. Now, some of the programs are, they're just ongoing, they're just practice, they're, they're best practice. Other programs, you get a, have quite a big checkbox, for example, for having completed the ADU ordinance last year. That was, that was really important. I'm also noting, and this is fleshed out quite a bit more in the council staff report because they are working on a housing work plan, and we'll, we'll make sure to relate that back to the planning commission. But citing a few things where we anticipate doing work in 2019, because I, I really want HCD to see the continuation of, of the work that you're doing. It isn't, it isn't like it's just one year and then another year a couple of years later. This is, this is an ongoing, kind of relentless approach to getting, getting your housing element implemented. So, you know, when you, when you have some time to read these programs again in long form, we'd be happy to give you, I think some of you have hard copies of the Housing Element. Of course, it's online, it's really easy to find, and you can, you can take a look at the, more of the detail about them. But we're paying attention to them, and you are making progress. But one of the things, just kind of in conclusion of what I want to mention about this, is there are kind of a suite of zoning amendments that we would like to bring to you this year in advance of your, your land use plan update, that we've talked about, we've, we've touched on them regarding parking ratios for multifamily development and mixed-use development. A really interesting thing that I'll mention at the end of your meeting in the director's report about having to get a use permit to use a house as a house in downtown. So, yep, we want to get rid of that. There's a few other code things like that, that probably almost always had a really good reason for being implemented, but maybe we don't need to have them anymore. There's another way to approach whatever it was trying to protect. So we'll share those with you. Those are identified by our Housing Element, as certified by HCD, as constraints, and we are supposed to be working towards removing regulatory constraints that are really not, in this case, necessary for compliance with the local coastal program. Now, there's an, and I forgot one other thing, there's a bunch of pages in here and references to permit, some kind of streamlining requirements. I am not a great person to answer a lot of questions about those because they're not applicable here. I, I knew them pretty well when that legislation first came out because we all had to study it. But any site that is in the coastal zone is exempt from those requirements, and thus, that is why you see zeros or no reporting at all in those columns, is because we're, we're not supposed to be implementing those streamlining requirements in the coastal zone. So there is, there is an acknowledgement in the Housing Element Law that the coastal zone is special. We're still supposed to be addressing constraints within the context of that, and so I think you'll see that as we come forward with some zoning amendments. And I saw a green card come up, and I don't have much more, but I'd love, I'm happy to field questions, and if I don't know the answers tonight, well, I can come back and get back to you on them.
Okay, great. So with that, yeah, let's take public comment real quick. I've got one green card. Mr. McFerrer.
Good evening, commissioners. I chose to speak to this item because oftentimes I address the council, but really, the council typically doesn't get down in the weeds about things, and you are the weed getter donors. So there's a lot of legislation pending now with ominous impacts, and you may not be exempt from it. For instance, if you don't build enough houses, you don't get transportation money. This is the governor's thing. You have set a whole raft of things that seem to want to punish cities for not building enough housing. Now, there's only seven or eight cities in California that build housing, so it's kind of a weird discussion. What you do is you permit, and in order to permit, you have to have an application. But nonetheless, RENA and other such things are close to building. The reason I wanted to talk to you is that it's very important, as we're doing tonight, to capture what we're actually doing. In January, though, we looked at Measure D, and I read the Measure D report for history as to what we've been doing, and it looked kind of sparse, except there was something missing in the history section, and that was Half Moon Village. Well, that's a lot of units. So how could that be missing? And I have asked council members, could you please find out why that's not there? Because it's a lot of units. It's maybe what, three years' worth of Measure D. So it would make us look better to get, to get that straightened out. I don't know what we're reporting to HCD. If it didn't get into Measure D, did it get reported to HCD? This precedes the current city administration and the current city council, so I'm not complaining about their work, but I'm trying to find out what happened with Half Moon Village. It's a wonderful development. It's affordable. I know people that are paying only $253 a month in rent. It's a phenomenal, wonderful thing. So, putting that side, it's just, I'm here, this just seemed like the right point to talk about record-keeping and how important it is to the future of this city when we report to HCD. We don't want to leave anything out, and it would be nice if you down-in-the-weeds folks could dig that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, did you want to provide any response to that?
I'll respond generally, and we can bring you specific data. So, again, Scott, and I did too, we both spent a lot of time looking for Measure D certificates for Half Moon Village. We can explain some of it, but not all of it. We believe some of the units were rehabilitated units and they're replacement units, and so we don't have to count those. I'm not sure about the rest of it, and I don't know if we will really ever get a clear explanation of that based on the research that we've done. I had to set it aside, it was time-consuming. We can, we can dig back into it. That said, I do believe all those units, rehabilitated units are also reported to HCD, in particular, if they were part of your housing stock that is deed-restricted, affordable. And I know that I've seen them on a report, and it might have been the 2014 report, it might have been in the previous cycle. So I'll, we can go take a peek at that, but I'm quite, quite sure that we've, we've had them come through at some point. Yeah, and you're right, I know. We'll, we'll go look some more. But we're definitely counting them to HCD. We'll get, we'll bring you a report. Okay, yep.
Commissioner Medger.
Thank you. So this, this may be for my, for my clarification. First, is that also true for Leslie Gardens? Would that have been in the previous cycle as well, or, yeah? And so when we, you know, since capacity doesn't grow at a constant rate, it kind of grows in spurts. When we get more done in the last cycle than we actually were required to do, do we get any credit for that in the new cycle, or we, so there's an incentive for us to plan our growth to just get to the right spot so that the next time, we're not, we're less likely to go short. That's a perverse incentive. I wonder if anybody else in the League of Cities anticipates that that's an issue. Maybe not. Also, as, and I think I understood this from your report, our, our job is to remove from, you know, in prior years, our, our job was to remove regulations that discouraged that, the ability to achieve these things. But these reports seem to be very oriented toward, did you get the housing? get the housing, did the housing get built or not? And I wonder if you anticipate lots of carrots or lots of sticks, such as the transportation fund thing that we heard the public speak to earlier, that would befall cities that do a good job of removing regulatory inhibitors, but the market doesn't say they want to go out and build these things. So the question is, is, does HCD intend, and do you think they have the juice to punish cities for what private developers choose not to build in one city despite doing good regulatory work to facilitate it if they want to?
I'm not going to speculate an answer to that, but I would like to share with you what we're doing to track the housing legislation. The city has Townsend and Associates, who is, they track legislation, they actually help us also with grant writing. We're in particular looking at a number of things that are really important for the coastal zone as well as this housing legislation. One is SB 50, that's the Weiner bill, and it's very concerning to the towns over the hill, and we can talk about why offline over coffee with any of you. It's way beyond what we could really dig into tonight. The focus of it, though, is for cities that have jobs-rich areas, and so we're checking to see how Half Moon Bay actually falls into that. We don't meet any of the density requirements. Our transit is likely not adequate to meet the threshold of what they're looking for. That said, it's early days for that, and it's going to take some time for it to march through, and there's many, many other pieces. As Mike was describing, there's all kinds of other bills going through. We're also monitoring the CASA compact. The CASA compact is a 10-piece, another, it's a package coming through ABAG MTC, and it has a few things that overlap with the draft SB 50 language. There's a few things in there, I should bring it to you, actually. I don't want to rattle off what it is because there's 10 parts, they're all pretty important. They come in three different categories: protection, so like tenant protections, preservation, preserving the housing stock that you have, and production. And there is some crossover with things that your council is interested in, in terms of protections in particular, that would not really go sideways with anything that has to do with the coastal zone or being a smaller town, or not having a job center like over the hill or having transit. That's a different class of types of things that you could be considering doing here. So, there's the land use side, there's a programmatic side, and there's a whole lot of work for us to keep up with it, and our attorney is going to help us. You've met Sarah Clark through the ADU ordinance. Sarah, in particular, with Shute Mahoney, is a housing wonk, and so she's also paying attention. So we're all, we're watching it. It's early for us to understand what's going to happen, but I hear, I see the hand raised. Something just came out today out of the governor's office that crossed my email. So...
And just one other question.
Yep.
So, are we keeping an eye on the process of defining our next cycle's RENA requirement so that we can be sure that it's rooted in reality?
Well, that's yes, and I also want to note, I think the idea of whether you do just enough, that's a whole policy thing, you know.
Whether, let me be clear about that. I'm not making a blanket policy that says we should do X and not a single more unit. I just want to manage the risk of somebody beating up the city because we did a ton in one cycle, and if you take that plus what we do in the next cycle, it's more than enough. But because of the idiosyncrasy of when the cycle ended, we don't get credit for what we did. That's what I want to...
Yeah, and the last cycle, the city did an amazing job because you had a number of projects that happened, kind of all at the same time. The Sustainable Community Strategy SB 375 that I already mentioned, the Plan Bay Area approach to regional planning, has helped Half Moon Bay get a right-sized RENA. Your 240-unit RENA over an eight-year cycle is 30 units a year, which is less than half of your Measure D allocation. So, somebody has been paying attention to what the city is actually even allowed to produce, so I'm hopeful that that will be consistent, and you'll see that thread going through. And then the other way that we're looking ahead to the next cycle is with the build-out work that we're doing on the land use plan and paying attention to adequate sites and the intent for those adequate sites to be focused in the town center.
Thank you.
I'll just add on that, Jill mentioned the Plan Bay Area cycle. I mean, the Plan, the next round of Plan Bay Area is sort of kicking off now, the Horizon project that's being led by MTC and ABAG. Over the course of, there was actually, right now, there is going on a workshop in Oakland to get public input through that process. There's a series of webinars. There's another public workshop on March 14th in San Jose, but there's a lot of information online and different scenarios about Bay Area growth, and a lot of focus about, you know, building within existing urban limit lines and transit-oriented development and a lot of that stuff that I think will ultimately be helpful in, as Jill says, sort of right sizing our RENA and making sure that housing is going in the right place. Commissioner Broger.
I would definitely be interested in learning more about some of the legislation that's coming up. I think that would be helpful. I think also, based on what I've seen, it, to a certain extent, we haven't been kind of players because of our situation with some of the funding incentives. It would be interesting to know if it's changing now to where there are sticks. I know, I mean, in the past, we, I mean, we have a, we have priority conservation area. That's, you know, the designated coastal trail alignment, and that's about it in terms of getting some of that type, that type of funding, the O-BAG stuff. So, you know, in a sense, the, like, the fear of having, you know, transportation dollars taken away in that respect may not be as big of a loss. So just being clear about where the pressure points are and whether that would change would be helpful, because honestly, it is a big deal if there's a big stick that's going to be hit, come down, or a carrot that will suddenly be gone. That is important to be aware of. So I would also be interested in kind of the funding side.
Yeah, I do know that Horizon project, they're going to be looking for a new round of priority conservation area nominations and more discussions about the O-BAG program and trying to increase that. Commissioner Reddick?
What's the duration of the current cycle?
We're halfway through, 2015 to 2023.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate Table D, and I think it's pretty impressive, a lot of the programs that Half Moon Bay has going on. So I think, I hope, even though, as we look at some of the numbers in terms of affordable housing and some of those things, and noted that we aren't necessarily housing builders, but there are a lot of programs here to remove the barriers. One thing I was curious about in terms of incentives for development of infill lots or within the downtown core or, say, our lead-up park area, is there much discussion that's going on? I know we've had some conversations about different incentives that might be able to spur some of those property owners to move forward with development of either substandard lots or vacant lots?
So I think one of the things we were talking about with the, I don't know if this is an incentive, but it's a removal of a barrier. We're hoping to, through your land use plan update, end up with well-defined, appropriate areas where we can have waivers, so they are exclusionary, what are they called? Categorical exclusion areas? No, they're not. They're exclusion areas, and you can get a waiver. And they need to be, they need to be in the fabric where you, you're doing infill. We're not, we're not on the edge of something. We're not with habitat nearby, and so we would really want to pour over maps like that. That kind of incentive helps in terms of the cost of entitling, you know, assume a small development, something that is, maybe it's a duplex or a triplex. And that's a type of housing that is really important to the population in Half Moon Bay. That's, that's really serves well. It's not the highest-yielding type of project. Developers make more money building large, single-family homes than they do building small duplexes and triplexes. You see it over and over. And it's why your R2 and your R3 zoning, where we've been looking at whether or not we need to have a minimum density standard, and there is some of that in your code now, but we still, there was a code change that allows single-family homes and R3 lots, and we need to be really careful about having that happen in the future because we lose yield on those lots. And those R3 lots are exactly the kinds of locations, in most cases, not all of them, but most of them, that would be good for waivers because they are infill. They are tight into town. Or your mixed-use zones, your commercial downtown and commercial residential transition zone. So, that is one thing. We already did this with ADUs, and we're seeing feedback about that. And I'm going to tell you about that in the Director's Report, because we've had more feedback since I talked about it two weeks ago. And we can, we can discuss more incentives later, but I'm not exactly sure what, it's a broad category. I don't, I don't know exactly what you have in mind, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll just add, just, I mean, since I've been on this commission, I know I've seen, been really happy to see a lot of the substandard lots move forward, some of the diverse housing types, the with-liv-work units that we're seeing going in on Kelly Street and Main Street, and just a number of different ways, and then, of course, the ADUs. So I think, I think, you know, we're doing a fair amount here, so I'm excited about that. Unless there's any other questions, we can move on to, oh, Rick. Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot you were there.
Another question, I think you guys have really covered all of the core elements. Again, I want to commend city staff for the thoroughness and their approach, and I like the way that we're taking this on. So thank you all for your hard work here.
And thank you. Okay, so with that, we can move on to the Director's Report.
All right. Briefly, your agenda forecast, your next meeting is March 26th. Ann Riley, a Stream Bed Restoration Specialist, will be here to give a presentation, and that will be relative to the land use plan study session, which there were a number of things you wanted us to come back with. I'm not sure how many of those things will be ready. We'll bring what we can, but we will definitely have open public forum and continue to talk about your land use plan update. You'll also see a sewer line replacement project that was on the cusp of being exempt, and we just are being cautious about it and want to go ahead and process it as a permit and bring it to you. It's a public project, and we just like to be very straightforward with these things. April 9th, we're lined up for 2,800 Champs-Elysees. This was a single-family home that you continued to a date uncertain back in August, and it was one of two. You've already seen one of them. And we're also planning to bring, if we've got it ready, an application at 700 Main Street for a use permit. This is a house that was converted to a commercial use for a while, a non-priority commercial use, an insurance company, that is now going to be a house. And they have to get a use permit to use their house as a house. So I just, let's really explore this when you see it because I think it's a great case study, and we're going to follow all the rules, and let's look at what that, what that's like. I think it, we have a great applicant and get a great planner working on it. Scott's got it, and we'll just, we'll see what your feedback is on that, and I want to see what the value of that use permit is. Maybe, maybe there's a lot, maybe there's findings in it that I don't anticipate, so we look forward to this. You've got two mixed-use projects that are getting close to ready, the Bike Works project that you saw in study session format, and we also have a mixed-use project on Mill Street. It's two units over Office that we're hoping to bring to you before the end of spring. And for my hearing load, I've got a few things coming, but nothing scheduled yet. There's a new house on Roosevelt, and we have a single-family home that's going to propose for a significant remodel and add an accessory dwelling unit, which is the segue to Measure D update. So this year's Measure D allocations were 71, and we can, we can bring back a report on maybe, maybe some of this with some of the more housing things that we can talk about with legislation later. But we've, I just, I'm about to sign the 17th Measure D certificate, and it doesn't seem like very many out of 71, but they're all outside of downtown. And the way the 71 certificates are distributed is 47 are downtown and 23 are outside of downtown, which means we're, we've got a free board of six Measure D certificates outside of downtown. There is code for transferring half of the downtown certificates to outside of downtown, but you can't do that until after September 1st. No one here has ever done it, so we've read the code like four or five times, and we're going to have Winter read the code four or five times. So if we come to that, we're going to make sure we do that perfectly to the best of our ability. But we just wanted you to know this is on the horizon, and it's, it's new for us, and a lot of it's because we are issuing Measure D certificates for ADUs, which we had not been doing. We've been counting the units. All those units have been counted for our growth. They've been counted for HCD, but they were not part of the Measure D program, and now they are. Reconfirming a few things, just some announcements. City Council has one more listening session. It will be March 17th, and there's going to be information posted on the website. It will be another Spanish-language session, and their party setting session is still scheduled for March 26th, and we are still accepting applications for the NET program that we talked about a bit last time. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So moving on to Planning Commission Communications. Any Planning Commission Communications to report?
Well, I have a question that is pretty off the wall, but Brian, you made me think of it when asking about incentives for downtown infill, and I'm just curious whether there's anything public that can be shared about the status of the lot on the corner of Kelly and Main Street that has been in kind of a blighted situation for so many years, that the downtown experience could be so much nicer if something ever could be done with that. And maybe, maybe there's no news to be shared publicly, but if so, I'm just curious.
I don't have anything at this time.
Very good. Any other Planning Commission Communications to report? Okay, with that, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second. Rick, you want to, you want to join us from Florida?
I am in favor, yes.
Okay. Go ahead and get some rest, and this meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, that would be bad.